Okay, we're back from executive session at 7:59 where we talked about personnel. I need a motion to amend the agenda to hire Bill Franks and Peter Janovich as middle school softball coaches pursuant to the terms and conditions of the MEA collective bargaining agreement pending receipt of all required clearances as item K23.
Second.
Second.
You have to refresh, Ken, if you didn't.
It's number 23, so when we get down there, we're not going to skip that. K23.
K23.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Any comments from the public?
Dave, could you say your motion again?
I will. The motion is to amend the agenda to hire Bill Franks and Peter Janovich as middle school softball coaches pursuant to the terms and conditions of the MEA collective bargaining agreement pending receipt of all required clearances as this will be item K23 on the revised agenda, the amended agenda. Any comments from the public? We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
I need a motion to accept with regret the letter of resignation of Aaron Lee effective August 3, 2023, and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Need a motion to accept with regret the letter of resignation of Donald Scott McEwen effective August 10, 2023, and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position.
So moved.
Yeah, big regret. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Need a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Ellen Crawford, par educator, effective August 18, 2023, and authorize the administration to post and advertise if necessary for the position. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Need a motion to accept with regret the retirement of Ms. Linda Stoddard, August 21, 2023.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to hire Giovanna Morello as an elementary teacher at Bachelor Step Two, subject to assignment pursuant to the terms of the collective bargaining agreement and pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams, and Act 168 verification.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Passes. Motion passes.
I was just waiting for the opposed that I wanted to make sure before I came up. I have the great privilege to introduce Giovanna to you as the board. Giovanna comes to the McGuffey with a Bachelor of Science in Education from Duquesne University. She has taken 15 graduate courses towards her reading specialist certificate. Giovanna has also earned a foundation certificate for K and 1. She did her student teaching in first, in a first grade classroom as well as a reading specialist assistant, as well, as well as a reading special assistant. Claysville Elementary was lucky enough to have Giovanna as a long-term sub in the position she was just hired for in second grade, and we feel Giovanna will be a welcome addition to the Claysville team as well as the McGuffey community. So we feel very honored to have her a part of the team, so.
Thank you so much to the superintendent and my principal, Mr. Wolf, and all of those school board members. I am so appreciative of this opportunity, and I'm so excited to work at McGuffey.
Thank you.
And the motion to hire Alicia Manke as an elementary teacher at Master Step One, subject to assignment pursuant to the terms of the collective bargaining agreement and pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams, and Act 168 verification. Have a motion in a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Alicia is not here tonight, but I have the distinct pleasure to introduce her to you tonight. Alicia started her education career at the, at, at the Child Care and Learning Center for six years. During that time, Alicia earned a Bachelor of Science in Education at California University of Pennsylvania. She continued her education by attaining a master's in STEAM education with a, with a STEAM endorsement, certificate, or STEAM endorsement. She has worked as a pre-K teacher for the past seven years. We feel Alicia will be a great addition to the Claysville team and to the McGuffey community. One thing about Alicia, she and her family came to McGuffey because they love McGuffey. So they want their, their kids to be a part of this, this community, and we feel that we have a pretty special person in our team now. So everybody just welcome her. She's on vacation in Tennessee right now, so.
I need to motion to hire Kayla Harden as a par educator, subject to assignment pursuant to the terms and conditions of the collective bargain agreement and pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams, and Act 168 and 126 verifications.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I abstain.
Scott abstains. Your niece, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Motion passes. Need a motion to approve Catherine Deegan as a long-term substitute teacher for the first semester of the 2023-2024 school year and pursuant to the terms of collective bargaining agreement and pending receipt of all required clearances, medical exams, and Act 168 verifications. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion, need a motion to approve Julie Cox as the elementary activity sponsor for the Jump Rope Club, the Hopping Highlanders, for the 2023-2024 school year. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
It is, yes. It was, it was paid.
We've had that one for a long time.
Yeah. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the sabbatical leave of a high school, middle school teacher as requested for the 2023-2024 school year. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we need to have somebody replace this person?
We are actively seeking someone at this point. This is a one-year, so yes, it'll be a long term.
That was my question. Is it, it's a full year?
It's a, it's a full year sabbatical.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Will we be looking at our current sabbatical?
This position requires a specific certificate, skill set certification. However, we may have to go the emergency certification route.
Anything else? I need, need a motion to approve the sabbatical leave of an elementary teacher as requested for the first semester of the 2023-2024 school year. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the following substitute teachers as building substitutes for the 2023-2024 school year pursuant to the terms of the collecting bargaining, collective bargaining agreement. They are Courtney Crowe and Paula Weiss. So moved. Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to hire the following list of 2023 Fall Sports Assistant Coaches per the, per the terms and conditions of the agreement between the McGuffey Board of Directors and the McGuffey Education Association pending receipt of all required clearances and Act 168 verification. In the event of a partial season, salaries will be prorated.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call? We have a roll call vote, please, Laura. Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Kern?
Yes.
Mr. Lajer?
Abstain, John Lajer's my son.
Ms. Lephardt?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Shingle?
Yes.
Mr. Banana?
Yes.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. I need a motion to hire Carly Pettit for the 2024 season as head softball coach, spring sports season as per the MEA. So moved. Agreement.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to rehire John Demme as an armed school police officer at the salary of $38,000 per year with no other benefits for the 2023-2024 school year. So moved. Second. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the following list of substitutes for placement on the 2023-2024 substitute teacher list pending receipt of all required clearances and Act 168 verifications.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the list of candidates as presented for emergency day-to-day substitute teachers for the 2023-2024 school year, excuse me, school year pending receipt of the PA Department of Education Emergency Permit, all required clearances, and Act 168 verifications. So moved. Second. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the 2023-2024 substitute par educator slash secretary list as presented. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the 2023-2024 substitute cafeteria list as presented. So moved. Second. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the individuals listed below as substitute custodians for the 2023-2024 school year. That says 2024-2024, but.
So moved.
Second. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve first student and G G and C school bus van drivers for the 2023-2024 school year pending receipt of all required clearances as presented. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to hire the following site coordinators for the 2023-2024 school year pending receipt of all required clearances. Michael Molesick, Alex Hauck, Timothy Hamburger, and Chad McGowan. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
What is their salary?
It is per game. I don't know. It's like 55.
How much?
Is it 55 per game or something?
It used to be 35, but that's when I first retired.
It's a per game, per diem.
We will get that amount.
Any other discussion?
Sure.
They, they help with games and events.
Basically, they liaison with the.
Security?
Security. They liaison with the referees.
Okay.
That type of stuff.
I didn't think they were like building people. Like they, because with that many, I didn't know if there was one for each building or something.
No, no, no. It's one per event.
Yeah.
Well, for soccer games, any sporting event, anything like that, there's one of those site coordinators. I'm not sure that it's not required by the WPIL, but I may be wrong on that. Yeah, they set up the chains for walking through. They set, and then they tear down when they're done.
Thank you.
Have you given them a raise any time?
I think, like I said, Ken, when I retired, I think Ed was paying $35 for that.
That's all.
And I think if, if they're right, they've gotten a raise since in the last seven years sometimes.
I know they've gotten a raise. I just can't think of what it is.
Yeah, obviously.
We'll get that to the board tomorrow.
Okay. Did we take a vote? We did not. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We've already done 23. We have to do it again?
Yeah. We just added it.
Okay. Need a motion to amend the agenda. I need a motion to hire Bill Franks at C2 50% and Peter Janovich, C1 50%, as middle school softball coaches pursuant to the terms and conditions of the MEA collective bargaining agreement pending receipt of all required clearances, and that is as item K23. So, second. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
In business, I need a motion to authorize the administration to set the substitute rates for the 2023-2024 school year as follows. Substitute secretaries, 1250 per hour. Substitute paraprofessionals, 1250 per hour. Substitute food service workers, 1250 per hour. Substitute custodian cleaners, 1250 per hour for daylight shifts and 1350 per hour for afternoon weekend shifts. So moved. Second. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
This is in, within our budget, correct?
It is. It will help us with our overtime charges.
Great, thank you.
Is this in that budget?
No, we're increasing these to help us with the budget for our overtime.
Overtime.
Do we have an MOU?
This is for substitutes.
This is for substitutes.
Substitutes aren't a part of the bargaining. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Need a motion to authorize the administration to set the daily teacher substitute rate for the 2023-2024 school year at $125 per day. So moved. Second. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve the student and adult breakfast and lunch prices in accordance with the National School Lunch Paid Equity requirements. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any discussion?
Did, did the state, did the state pass that the breakfast will be free?
So as of Tuesday, August 8th, Governor Shapiro included in his 2023-2024 fiscal year school budget, $46.5 million for universal free breakfast. So that looks to be coming our way.
Great.
Hasn't, budget hasn't been approved yet.
Not completely.
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to approve Hosack, Specht, Butzel, and Wood LLP to audit the McGuffey School District financial statements for the year ending June 30, 2023 as presented. So moved. Second. Second. I can't second. Sorry, I got out of control there. Yeah, I gotta rein it back. Deb, is, that's the same company we had?
It's a one-year contract instead of a three-year contract. They're scheduled to come in the second week of September. They promised that they are going to present this budget in a timely manner, so that's why it's only a one-year contract.
Good.
I'm sure that happens.
And no increase.
And no increase.
Thank you, Deb.
This is the same rate as it was for 2023.
Yes.
Thank you, Deb.
Thank you, Deb.
Thank you.
You get a second? I did get a second, though. Good. Myself. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. I need a motion to request approval to replace fogged window glass panes only at Joe Walker Elementary by American Glass at a cost of $12,000, funds to come from the capital improvement account. So moved. Second. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve Johnson Controls Incorporated to upgrade the necessary software and hardware to be compatible with the current version of Microsoft Server software at a cost of $133,500, funding from the capital improvements account. So moved. Second. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve Intertech PSI as the provider for the mandatory three-year AHERA inspection and report at a cost of $1,100. So moved. Second. And that is asbestos. We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? That's for asbestos inspection. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Need a motion to approve payment to Anderson Price for invoice dated July 31, 2023 in the amount of $1,280 as submitted.
Second.
A motion is second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have three policies here. Are these all first reading, Doc?
Number one actually is for a vote.
Number one's for a vote.
And the other two are for a read.
Okay. Need a motion to adopt policy 114, programs for gifted pupils as presented. So moved. Second. Have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the next two are first readings.
First readings, correct.
Okay. Administrative reports, facilities use report.
In the month of July, we had a total of 22 uses of the buildings, one for football boosters, high school, then two were for the youth football meetings. That's all.
Okay. The budget expenditure report and the P card spending summary are there for your information. Solicitor's report.
Solicitor has no report, Mr. Smith.
Okay. Western area and career in technology, that's me. We have our meeting next week. We had quite a few resignations in the last month. We lost our networking instructor. We lost our welding, a welding instructor. We have two. We lost a school nurse. We lost a machine shop instructor, and we lost a paraprofessional. That's not so good news. We did find a welding instructor, which we'll be hiring next week. We found a replacement nurse. We found a replacement for networking instructor, and they're looking, currently looking for a machine shop instructor. So that's all the losses and hires down there. Mr. Milanovic also reported that the renovation on the cosmetology department will be completed by the time school starts, and he's very excited, as well as I am, to see the new facilities down there, which will give them 50 morning, 50 afternoon students availability. Cut me some slack. Pennsylvania School Board Association report.
Okay, August is the national back-to-school month, so they do have a couple of things. And as usual, we're right on task or just ahead. Register to get your updates for your safety programs. There are a lot of safe and sound conferences in September and October if any of you are interested in. I know we're up to date with all of those, but it reminds everybody this is a time to look at them. Also, there's a, a webinar about pandemic funding and ESRS money. I know it's ending, but there's something in case you have questions or you're just wondering where the money went or how it was dispersed, there is information out there if you're interested in looking at it. The other thing was review of your budgets, and the big thing was about the AI coming into the schools, the artificial intelligence. Because in the past, when we use the Alex program, it's about math. It's just for the student, and, and it was very helpful, but they're saying now with the new AI insertion into the educating system, it will be helpful for, a helpful resource for the educators. I don't know if that's good or not. Y'all have your own opinion. I think it sounds a little scary because they could be putting in something other than just math or English or grammar, but it's out there, and they have a lot of updated information on that on their website if you're interested in any of those conferences.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
At this time, we will have public comment on non-agenda items.
Okay, we can pull this up. I have a couple of questions. To August, for first reading, does one cover employees of the district outside of the district?
Correct. They, they actually both refer to, I believe it's.
Employees, I think. It said employees, people employed by the district.
Yeah.
Hey.
I have another thing that I think we may need to look at. If you drive by the schools in the summertime and see who's cutting the grass, you'll find that we're paying highly qualified, highly skilled employees to cut grass. As part of cost savings, I'd like to propose that we look into hiring a maintenance helper, groundskeeper, whatever you want to call them. groundskeeper, whatever you want to call them. I don't think our.
Summer employees?
Employees should be cutting grass.
You think it's summer employee or something like that?
We used to have this position and it was eliminated in 2017.
Utility?
And they've all been brought back except this position. What brought my attention to driving by Joe Walker, Creed used to have this position.
We did just hire a utility person.
We did.
We did.
But, but you're right, we do have two of our maintenance folks, and I know in some school districts, sometimes the summer help is made up of high school students. So it is something that we could look at for the future because certainly that kind of work where your maintenance is being pulled away, that does happen. We did just hire what you're speaking of. So we were not able to secure someone that had the same skill sets as our two existing maintenance individuals, so we actually hired someone that would not have the same skill set, not be held to the same standards, and would do a lot of that. But I think, Ken, what you're suggesting is having someone who's not in the maintenance, who repairs things in the building, knows kind of things cutting your grass, is that correct?
Yes, so I guess the question, the person we hired does not have the skill sets to maintain these people who have passed.
Not, not, he was not hired as a maintenance, he was hired.
As utility.
Utility.
It was actually a transfer.
So we have the same number of maintenance people that we had before?
No, we have two because we had one retirement.
So we're not hiring a third one?
I believe he's planning on working with two maintenance and one utility person.
I think it's awful skimming for the amount of millions he's paying. But again, I've seen, or hired paid maintenance people cutting grass, which I think is a waste. I mean, they should be doing PMs, looking at things to save money on the long term, not driving along. That's just my.
Something to pass on to Craig.
Be nice if we could hear him.
Hear who?
Mr. Lajer.
You got a green light?
I got a green light. What I was saying was, I think that we need to look into hiring a person to take care of the grounds and facilities and plow snow. We're currently paying our highly skilled maintenance people to cut grass, which I don't think is quite in their pay scale. I think we could be paying someone less than our current maintenance people, but also it's taking your maintenance people away from doing PMs and corrective actions and things that could be saving the district money in the long term. So I just think it's something we need to look at. Did you hear me?
Sure.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will entertain public comment on non-agenda items.
Okay, first we have Kelly Ziegler from Buffalo Township.
Hello, my name is Kelly Ziegler, and I live in Buffalo Township, and I'm here today to talk about the gifted teacher position. I apologize for my zeal to speak early, I must have misunderstood the agenda, so I do apologize for that. As you clearly know, Mrs. Walters was the gifted teacher for all grades K to 12 for over six years. At the spring GIP meetings, we were made aware that Mrs. Walters was leaving, and we were informed that a number of qualified candidates were about to be interviewed. Having this information, we were quite surprised, we were quite surprised to receive a letter stating that the district chose not to hire a teacher for these 26 students. After taking some time to think through this process, I felt it important to dig in and ask some questions. I want to thank Dr. Oberg and Dr. Rycheck for their open communication with both emails and phone calls. After numerous conversations, I can appreciate the thought process behind this decision. I've heard how this new structure will give more time for planning and instruction. However, when I dig into this, I see a number of concerns. By dividing this position between six staff members, two school psychologists, one school counselor, and three special education teachers, the consistency will clearly be missing. The staff organizing competitions is not the staff that will be teaching the students, the staff preparing students will not be going on the trips, and the students from two elementary schools will be taught by three different teachers and then sent on to compete as one team. Pairing this with the teachers being unable to communicate and plan together, we are creating problems instead of solutions. The second area that gives me pause is adding this amount of workload to our teachers. The ability to give the needed time to these students will greatly be impacted by other duties. I have heard how there is ample time and schedules to share with these students, but when thinking about individualized assessments, writing IEPs, and one-on-one instruction, it appears to be a good plan on paper. However, when putting this plan into action, there needs to be a hard look at reality. If these staff truly have this amount of time, why didn't they have other duties last year? Confident that their schedule was full last year, and it has been stated that we're not taking away any duties from these staff, some duties are going to be left undone. I have been asked to trust the process and see what happens. I agree the change takes time, and I trust that the board and administration will make the best decision. Before we embark upon this new school year, I ask you to simply revisit this plan through the eyes of a parent and student. I am not privy to all of the ins and outs of the entire school district, but I know that our motto is to make today better than yesterday. Taking away a full-time position that serviced 26 students and now sharing these duties between many overworked teachers is certainly not making today better. We will be going backwards and taking away the progress that we have made for these students. Before closing, I would like to make sure it is on record that at least one other parent has expressed their concerns through email to their school board members as they are out of town. I do not feel it's appropriate to speak for others, but I urge you to listen to all of the concerns through email and through conversations today. So I thank you for your time and your consideration on this matter.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Cable Dale from Buffalo Township.
Good evening, board members. Cable Dale, Buffalo Township, I have four children who attend McGuffey School District. I too am here to speak about the gifted program. I do not understand the ins and outs, and I don't pretend to, but I share Ms. Ziegler's concern. I have one son, and so I'll speak in the program, and so I want to speak to him and his experience, right? Having a holistic and focused program has allowed Alyou to be involved in a wide range of academic pursuits, including taking college courses with overseas universities, with diversifying his academic pursuits, and cultivating academic and leadership qualities in him that he's been able to then bring to the rest of the school. Some of you may know that Alyou is involved in a wide range of school programs, and those skills and those talents that have been identified and cultivated in the gifted program have been able to be, to be implemented in these other school programs. And I believe that his leadership and the leadership of other gifted students is what the program's about, right? It's about cultivating leaders in our school community and cultivating academic excellence. My concern, other concern is that these kids are supposed to be competing against other schools, schools that are, you know, different funding levels, different, you know, socioeconomic backgrounds that maybe benefit them, but our kids have competed and won at many of these events, right? We run a great ship, and we have elevated the status of the school, we promoted us as a community, and we've stood punched above our weight in a lot of these events. My concern is that not having a dedicated gifted teacher or someone who's just focused on this particular program is like taking the head coach out of the football team, right? You can say, okay, you have a variety of coaches, what, what's our concern? But you don't have anyone like Ed Dalton who has the big vision, right? Who has the overarching plan, who can identify different talents and slot them into different coaching abilities, right? You're going to ask these guys who have different backgrounds, who have other responsibilities to take on a role that's already kind of demanding, right? Mr. Haynes, I was thinking about your replacing the welding instructor or the shop instructor, and what I wanted to, what I would suggest is, well, you have these other teachers, right? I'm sure the cosmetics teacher may be able to fill in for a couple of the welding classes, and that way you could distribute some of those welding students to other teachers, right? So it's funny, but that's what we're looking at here. We're looking at kids who have been identified as talented and gifted, and just the way we want to do that with our student athletes, we want to identify talented, gifted, naturally athletic students and promote them and train them and equip them to be the best that they can be, that's what we want for our academically gifted students. So I just ask you, like Ms. Ziegler, to reconsider this position at some point and perhaps consider bringing back someone who can take on the role of an Ed Dalton-like position as the head coach of our academically gifted kids. I think so.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Are you currently, or have you been in the market?
Yes, that was one of the reasons I wasn't here previously was because I was, yes, deployed to the Middle East. You're welcome, sir, I wouldn't do it if I didn't love it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Nikki Jordan from Buffalo Township.
I'm going to give you all the ready to move.
You haven't been here for so long, Vic.
Next one, you're in for it.
Mrs. Jordan, please, could you speak, I really miss it.
I bet you do.
It was good to see you anyhow.
Yeah, it was good seeing you all too.
Nope, that's it, sorry.
Okay, that's the end of public comment.
Those two persons are saying, I don't know.
Well, we have a first and second.
Really quick, so I just.
Of adjourned?
All in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Motion's approved, we are adjourned at 8:39.
You're welcome, we'll see ya.